Good evening, welcome to the October Legislative Meeting of the Rose Tree Media School Board. This meeting is called to order. Please stand if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Scott, please take the roll.
Hillary Fletcher, here.
Jackie Guusik, here.
Susan Henderson Udis, here.
Shelley Hunt, here.
Robert Kelly, here.
Carleen Krenicki, here.
Miles Foster Larnar, here.
Erica Jonin, here.
Grace Moore, here.
Ken Dennett, here.
Teresa Napson Williams, here.
Madam President, we have a call.
Thank you, Dr. Scott.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add Garnet Valley Virtual Contract to the addendum as letter F and to table addendum item B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Alright, we will now have a special presentation by our students in the Pencrest Theater.
Thank you, Dr. Napson Williams. I'm excited to have Ms. Jen Smith come up to the podium. Jen is directing two shows here at the high school this fall. Little Shop of Horrors, fantastic, and Cinderella. So we have a special treat this evening to start our meeting off, and she's going to introduce some student performers.
You actually said pretty much everything I needed to say. We were doing two shows. We have a lot of kids involved this year, so we want to make sure there was opportunities for everybody. Our first selection is the very beginning of Cinderella. That is the main show this fall that most of the kids are in. And then we have a selection from Little Shop. That is, that's lovely. We have a selection from Little Shop, which is the show that most of the older students are in. That was an audition only for the kids who've been here a while and are ready for something a little bit more challenging. So I think that's all. I hope you enjoy. The first is Cinderella, and then Little Shop will follow. Thank you very much.
Wow, that was great. We look forward to Cinderella in the Little Shop of Horrors, and I'm glad so many people are here. Could witness that, and tell your friends and family. Make sure they come to the shows. Alright. Let's see, we'll move on to the Approval of Minutes, letter A. Is there a motion?
Some. I will move for it.
Second?
I will second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Alright, we will move over to Presentations and Awards. We have National Merit Scholarship Finalists. Semi-finalists, I'm sorry, semi-finalists. It is an honor to acknowledge three Pencrest High School seniors. Nolan Durans, Aditya Murphy, Alen Nguyen. These academically talented students received semifinalist recognition in the 71st Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Congratulations. Alright, we will move on to Reports. We will start with the Student Liaison Reports.
Good evening, I am Miles Foster Larnar, and I'll be beginning tonight's student reports with Glenwood Elementary School, where at the beginning of September, excuse me, at the end of September, Glenwood students celebrated earning 500 Paws for praise by having a pride assembly. The Glenwood students earned Paws by being ready, respectful, responsible, and kind. As a reward, each grade received extra recess and an all-school assembly, complete with Glenwood trivia, games, and the traditional Glenwood school song. Glenwood celebrated Math Storytelling Day this month. To celebrate, each grade level had a story problem to solve. Each grade level had a winner who had the correct answer and showed their work and thinking in reaching the solution. The Glenwood PTG had a wonderful turnout at the annual trunk-or-treat held at the Arasafa Farms. Families transformed their trunks into different themes, such as the Eagles, Glenwood, roller coasters, McDonald's, and rose tree colts. Students went from trunk to trunk playing games and collecting treats. Thanks to the Bates family for allowing the use of their property for this fantastic family and community event. At Indian Lane Elementary School, October began with our PBIS kickoff assembly, where students reviewed what it means to be ready, respectful, and responsible in all areas of the school. Indian Lane also introduced a new school-wide incentive focused on positive hallway behavior. Each day, mystery staff members recognized students who showed safe and respectful transitions. On October 1st, Indian Lane welcomed author and illustrator Chris Van Dusen, who shared how he creates his stories and artwork. First, second, and fourth graders were inspired by his creativity and humor, leaving them excited to write and draw their own ideas. A special thank you to Ms. Hatten for organizing this memorable experience. In fifth grade, students have been working on personal narratives. Students have focused on strong openings, sensory details, and clear transitions to bring their stories to life. Firefighters from Middletown Volunteer Fire Company came to Indian Lane on October 9th to share fire prevention and safety tips with kindergarten students. The firefighters even let the kids try on some of the equipment, touch the fire hose, and climb into the fire truck. Thank you.
Good evening, it's great to see you again. I'm Erica Jonin, and I will be presenting the reports for Media Elementary and Rose Tree Elementary. At Media Elementary this month, fifth-grade students at Media Elementary began studying the ancient civilizations of the Americas. Students are learning geography skills as they read and write, can identify Mesoamerica on a map, and can describe the varying landscapes of Central America and South America. Students especially enjoyed learning about the ancient Maya game of Pakatac, which is over 3,000 years old. Up next, they will compare the Maya, Inca, and Aztec civilizations. In October, Media Mustangs held the annual grandparents and special friends day. Each classroom had an activity for students and grandparents or special friends to do together. Kindergarten enjoyed a perfect fall day exploring a working dairy farm. Students went to Milky Way Farm and watched how cows are milked. They got to pet a real chicken, calf, goat, and lamb, and even tasted fresh ice cream. As part of this year's school theme of resilience, Media Elementary art students listened to "I Am Courage," written by Susan Verde, with illustrations by Peter Reynolds. Students drew mini bouncy balls that will be part of school-wide murals that promote resilience and spread the message, be resilient, bounce back. At Rose Tree Elementary, as part of an exciting library author visit, elementary students in fourth and fifth grade had the opportunity to hear from Jennifer Swanson, co-author of the Atlas Obscured: Explorer's Guide to Inventing the World. Swanson captivated young minds with fascinating stories about the global history of STEM, inspiring curiosity and imagination across continents and centuries. During the week of October 6th, Rose Tree celebrated Fire Prevention Week with activities and safety lessons for all grade levels. A special highlight for kindergarten was a visit from our local fire company. Firefighters taught them about the essential tools they use to keep our community safe and shared tips on fire safety. Students even got an up-close look at a real-life fire truck. Rose Tree Elementary students have been diving into the world of social sciences across all grade levels. In fourth grade, students are exploring the roles of social scientists, economists, historians, geographers, and political scientists, and discovering how each helps us understand the world in unique ways. Meanwhile, our second graders have been studying different types of communities. Students create posters that illustrate the key characteristics of urban, suburban, and rural communities. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Grace Moore, and I'll be reading the reports for Springton Lake and Pencrest High School. At Springton Lake, students in Mrs. Voschel's seventh-grade class teamed up to escape the classroom. In small groups, they took on a math-escape-room challenge focused on writing and solving proportions in real-world situations. To break out, students had to collaborate, think critically, and apply their math skills to crack the codes for three different levels. Each puzzle pushed them to use what they learned in class while racing against time and having a blast. Outpost space is a special elective for eighth grade. In this class, students experienced different technologies that could be used in developing outpost in space. Students are growing their foods using hypotonics. Students prepare their nutrient solutions for hypotonics by adjusting pH and nutrient levels. They are also planting seeds for germination, and also, while germinated, transferring their young plants to two different types of hypotonic systems. The Springton Lake Middle School Spartan Eighth Grade Band kicked off at the annual Pencrest Fields of Band on October 11th with a powerful performance of "The Star-Spangled Banner and This Is My Country." Under the direction of Mr. Reno, the students set up an inspiring tone for the evening, showcasing their musicianship, pride, and school spirit. The Springton Lake and Pencrest Fair program held their ballet Latinx dance celebrating in the Springton Lake Gym on October 10th. Parents and students from fifth grade and up came for a fun night out with the dance teachers from Salsa in the suburbs to learn traditional Latin dances. Choice Voices Club, an extracurricular chorus club for eighth-grade students, had started for the 2025-2026 school year. The ensemble performed at the sixth-grade concert as a part of a field trip to Hershey Park in the spring. This year, 93 students signed up and have had a blast at the first few rehearsals. The students are eagerly preparing for their winter concert on December 2nd. At Pencrest High School, this year's homecoming dance theme was Tangled, and 800 tickets were sold. Students enjoyed the cafeteria being transformed into elaborate DJ setup, including suspended lights, rigging, and smoking effects. The homecoming king and queen are Taylor Knox and Paul Graham. Court members are Olivia Rithniaka, Brady Donahue, Kira Ridpath, Chase Hamilton, Zana Alvarez, Gabe Akritia Parker, Amelia Guusik, and Dean Gabriel. Pencrest is off to a great start for fall, I mean, fall sports season. The golf team has two district qualifiers, Adrian Savarelli and Keon Nagle. The field hockey and girls' soccer teams have also qualified for the district playoffs. Football is off to their best start since 2009 with a record of 6-3. In September, the Eco Adventure had a successful trip to Assateek Island, national seashore. Students spent four days exploring this unique ecosystem, observing the night skies, fishing, swimming, and biking, and practicing survival skills. Mrs. Starkey's entrepreneurship students attended the Fall Innovation Sprint held at the University of Delaware on October 9th. Our students worked with many others from other school districts to come up with the best solution to a real-world problem. They pitched their idea to several innovators, investors, at the end of the design sprint. Pencrest's Sydney Reed and Jackson McNamara were members of the winning team. All students did a great job and can't wait for the Spring Innovation Challenge. Pencrest hosted the 8th Annual Festival of the Bands on October 11th. The panel of esteemed judges, included our very own Craig Snyder and Leanne Keon, provided vulnerable feedback and commentary for the visiting bands. Our district's Springton Lake Spartans kicked off the night's festivities with the national anthem, followed by a patriotic showcase. They were accompanied by the Valley Forge Military Academy Color Guard, who along with alum Aiden Robinson, proudly presented our nation's colors. Twelve marching bands from around the counties performed their halftime shows. The Roaring Lions closed their program with their 2025 field show, "It's Not a Phase, It's a Field Show," followed by a mass band finale. Over 1,200 members from all 12 bands joined together as one cohesive unit to perform the 1984 hit classic, "Talking Out the Side of Your Neck" by Cameo.
Hello again, and good evening. I hope that you have all had a wonderful start to this school year. This year has had an amazing start, and I am confident that it will continue to be this way. This Monday, Pencrest replaced all of its cafeteria furniture with brand-new tables, benches, and chairs. At the last legislative meeting, we had requested to see a change, and we are thankful that you delivered. As was the sentiment during last month, the change to block scheduling is still widely viewed by students in a positive light, and many teachers say that they feel the block schedules, or the block periods fly by. But they feel that some teachers have struggled adjusting their class style to incorporate block scheduling and wish to see changes in order to make class time more engaging. Thank you, and we hope that you have a great.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move to Board Liaison Reports. We'll start with the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Mr. Dennett.
Thank you, Madam President. The DCIU has been hard at work renovating campuses. Two of theirs are under massive construction right now, the Marple Campus, where they have completed in early fall a parent waiting room for the early intervention students and families. Lobby and front entrance, a brand-new playground that's equipped appropriately for the population there, a new stage in the auditorium, new fencing, new parking, and coming in December, we expect to be completed with the new nursing program building, which is very exciting. The nursing program features nurses taking the National Counsel Licenseure Examination, and for 24-25, 88% of students passed, which is well above the 80% required rate from the state. Work is continuing on early intervention classrooms there. And at Fallcroft, massive renovations are underway and will continue for more than a year on stormwater management, on the entrances and traffic control, and redoing the entire parking lot. The IU also has been in the midst of a search for a new executive director to start after this school year is over in August or September of '26. And we've gotten through the half of the first round of interviews and are planning for the second and third round of interviews, and hopefully we'll be able to announce a new executive director, candidate, nominee, by December. I also wanted to point out a scholarship opportunity for the families of children heading to college. America250PA is offering a $10,000 scholarship, 25 scholarships, and they will be awarded for students who are applying for schools in Pennsylvania. Applications will be accepted through January 31st, 2026. And again, that's America250PA, if you want to look it up online. Thanks.
Alright, we will move to Delaware County Community College. Ms. Hunt?
Yep. Hello, usually the annual sponsoring school district dinner is this time of year on a Wednesday evening in October. But this year's dinner has been postponed until the spring because they want to host it at the new facility at the old Archbishop Prendergast High School. They have finished, or they're in the process of finishing, the construction on the over 200,000-square-foot facility, and they want to have the culinary students, who will be hosted in that building, actually cater the entire meal for everyone. So, if you were wondering where that went, that's what happened. This year, this semester, we have 21 students from the Rose Tree Media School District, high school students who are doing dual enrollment with Delaware County Community College. Just a reminder to everyone, if you're not familiar, it's about $200 for a full three-credit course if you're a high school student in the Rose Tree Media School District, because we are a sponsoring school district. That is significantly less than if you're not a sponsoring school district, and certainly a very economical way to take a course that may not be offered at the high school, or may only be offered at a collegiate level, or some sort of certification for job training that you want to tackle early on in your career. As many of you know, there's over 20 colleges that you may start your education at Delaware County Community College, do two years there, and with, I think it's a 3O GPA, you can automatically transfer to over 20 different colleges and universities in the area. Delaware County Community College has just offered two more colleges to that, the Pennsylvania College of Art and Design and Ursinus College. And last year, I think, if you remember, I talked about the welding program. That got a big grant and said that if you wanted to apply to the welding program, it was covered free of charge, all materials, tuition, et cetera. This year, they have gotten a grant of $190,000 for the college's electromechanical program, which is for folks who want to work in industrial machine mechanics. So if you're in the community and you'd like, you're interested in a change of career or change of job, there is a grant right now that's supporting students pursuing careers in the industrial machine mechanics. And then a big highlighted student from Delaware County Community College is Krista Hayward. She's a carpentry student at Delaware County Community College. And after a very competitive application process, she is going to serve as the Public College and University Student Representative in the newly-formed Pennsylvania State Board of Higher Education. There was a big reorganization of that. So she will be the student representative. She is also, at the same time, completing a two-year fellowship with the U.S. Department of Energy's Building Technologies Office in Washington, DC. So she has been highlighted as the student this month to watch. And the welding program I mentioned, CBS News visited it on October 1st to showcase that program as well. So there's a ton of stuff going on at Delaware County Community College. If you haven't looked into it lately, I urge you to do so. It's a really, really cost-effective, high-quality educational system that's available to us.
Alright. The committee highlights and reports are contained within the minutes, so we will move to the superintendent's report, Dr. Malash.
Thank you, Dr. Napson Williams. Very pleased to report that the 2025-2026 school year is off to a tremendously positive start across all six of our schools. First weeks of the year have been defined by optimism, energy, and an unmistakable sense of forward momentum. Students and staff have settled quickly into routines that support both academic growth and personal connection, hallmarks of our district culture. We continue to see strong attendance and a genuine sense of enthusiasm from both staff and students. Families have been supportive. Families have been supportive and patient as they implemented new systems, and I'm deeply grateful for their partnership. We are nearing the completion of multiple construction and renovation projects across the district, from upgraded HVAC systems at Glenwood and Rose Tree Elementary Schools to classroom modernizations and safety enhancements at Penncrest and Springton Lake. These improvements will serve our students for decades to come. The K-one Early Learning Center project remains on schedule as our extensive team of professionals is preparing the application submission to the folks at Middletown Township. We are eager to move through the interactive process with the elected officials and professionals in Middletown Township to address any and all questions as we seek project and permitting approval. We will continue to update the community at each of our work session meetings and with our monthly Time to Bloom Update E newsletter, as each day brings us one step closer to providing full-day kindergarten and state-of-the-art facilities for our youngest learners. Community members may sign up for the monthly E newsletter through the portal on the webpage, Each of these projects has demanded persistence and flexibility from everyone involved. Our facilities and business office teams have maintained steady leadership in managing the complexities of the multi-site construction while keeping our, our schools safe, open, and welcoming. Our instructional and support staff have constantly, air quotes, "made it work," even on the challenging early days of the academic year. A special thank you to all of them. At the elementary and middle school levels, we successfully launched our new English Language Arts Program this fall. These resources rooted in research-based practices and aligned with our commitment to learning are already transforming reading and writing instruction. Early feedback has been positive as we examine student engagement and the progression of literacy skills across grade levels. At Penncrest High School, the implementation of the block schedule, designed to deepen learning, reduce transitions, and create more time for student inquiry, collaboration, and support is going well. Teachers are using extended periods to build project-based learning and individualized instruction into each day. Students have adapted quickly and report that the schedule allows them time to focus more deeply and manage their time more effectively. With anything that is new, there are continued adjustments and varying levels of comfortability with the schedule. I received valuable feedback when I met with a group of senior students at seven-thirty this morning and heard about their personal experiences. We've also had a remarkable start to our fall athletic season, from the energy of Friday nights under the lights, to the teamwork displayed on our fields, courts, and courses. Our student athletes are representing RTMSD with pride, sportsmanship, and heart. Beyond the wins and records, what stands out most is the character our athletes display, the same resilience we aim to nurture in every classroom. We celebrate their achievements, but also the lessons they model for us. The success comes not from ease, but from effort, not always from comfort, but from commitment. If there's a seam that unites this first part of the year, it's grit. The quiet determination to stay the course, to adapt, to persevere, whether it's a teacher mastering new curriculum or a new schedule, our facilities teams and transportation department always delivering under pressure, or a student pushing through a challenging text or difficult practice, we are seeing the positive results of resilience across our district. These moments, the ones that demand resilience, are the ones that build strength. They remind us that real learning, real growth, and real excellence comes not from avoiding challenges, but from embracing them. I want to express appreciation to our families and community members for their engagement, whether through attendance at school events, participation in PTG or fair meetings and events, or thoughtful feedback at school board meetings and email exchanges. Your partnership makes our schools and communities stronger. As we move forward into the heart of the school year, I remain incredibly proud of our students, our staff, and our community. Their persistence and positivity embody what makes Rose Tree Media such an extraordinary place to learn and to lead. Please come out to see Little Shop of Horrors and Cinderella. As always, please visit our website often to keep abreast of the activities in each of our schools throughout the district. There's a direct link to the Time to Bloom website, which is dedicated to the development and design of the new full-day kindergarten and first-grade center. Thank you, Dr. Napson Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Malasch. All right, we will move to the vote on the Solicitor's Report. Uh, I ask for a motion on the Commercial Taxpayer Assessment Appeal and the Residential Taxpayer Assessment Appeal Settlements. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll move to the President's Report. As we near the end of October, on behalf of the Board, I want to take a moment to recognize the hard work and collaboration that continue to define our Rose Tree Media School District community. Our students are thriving, our staff is deeply committed and engaged each day, ensuring that the decisions that are made keep student success and well-being at the forefront. As we move forward, we remain focused on ensuring safe, inclusive, and enriching learning environments and experiences for all students. Together, we are building on the proud tradition of excellence that exists in our community while preparing our students for the future. Thank you all for your continued support and commitment to Rose Tree Media. We will now move to scheduled presentations. Uh, Jeanette Verdur from RTMEA.
Good evening, everyone. I, I'm going to begin tonight, as I've mentioned at the last three school board meetings, that I encourage all constituents of Rose Tree Media School District to contact their legislators at the state and federal level and have them put their personal differences aside and sit down and have conversations with people who can get our budget passed. It, it amazes me, um, that this can go on for so long, and the te- the teachers themselves, we were discussing tonight about that, um, we need to have our public schools fully funded, and we need the, the government to do their job there. So, to the constituents who are listening, thank you for contacting your legislators. A few hours ago, I had an opportunity to gather, um, the membership of RTMEA. We meet twice a year as a full body, and one of our activities was called Open Conversations, and it's a really authentic way to talk to colleagues across buildings, across disciplines, et cetera, and just talk about things that we work with every day. My next remarks come out of our open conversation, and this is from the high school. One of the emerging themes tonight was the high school teachers are so happy that Mr. Roth put himself out there, took a chance, and created a cellphone policy at the high school, asking kids not to have their cellphones out in class, or not, you know, not allowing that. And that's a big risk, because there's a lot of pushback that can happen with stuff like that. But he was willing to do it, and the teachers are extremely grateful, because the engagement is off the charts. That's words from their mouths tonight. Continue to move forward as a district. We might want to examine similar situations at the middle school and at the elementary school. We should check in with our kids, see how it's working for them, how is not having a cellphone available twenty-four-seven in class working for you? And, um, and continue to move forward with this. I was just really pleased to hear that, and the teachers are so grateful that we were willing to, that Mr. Roth was willing to do that, and, and hopefully, we can move forward and let that spread throughout the district. So, thank you, and students, I'm looking forward to hearing from you on that topic. If you have a moment, reach out to me, okay? Thank you, good night.
Thank you. All right, uh, we'll move to unscheduled presentations. District residents and taxpayers wishing to address the school board are encouraged to do so at this time. Written items are strongly suggested. Speakers will state their name and their municipality for the record before commenting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The school board may suspend the public comment period after a reasonable amount of time. Use of profanity, shouting, or personal attacks are discouraged. Please note that the public comment period is intended to provide an opportunity for citizens to address the board. However, it is not an opportunity to participate in public debate or a question-and-answer dialogue. Therefore, contact information should be provided to the administration and board so that the school district can follow up with citizens' concerns following the meeting. We have Eric Schultz, Middletown.
Good evening, my name is Eric Schultz from Middletown Township. Thanks for letting me speak. Uh, I want to talk on the K to one school that you guys, that's being planned out for, uh, the corner of Rose Tree Road. I live on Hunting Hills, so I know there's a large constituent of us that are having some difficulty with that being placed there. Right now, traffic, I used to live on Painter Road, so traffic was terrible on Painter Road. It's very bad, especially when high schoolers are getting out of high school, and I've run down the street, and I've almost been hit, whereas the kids are going across the road, different things like that. You're adding additional traffic on Painter Road, or not you, but it will be additional traffic on Painter Road, and Hunting Hills will become a cut-through. So, I just want to express my concern with that. I know that everybody has their own interests, but please be aware of other people as well. Um, I do have a acquaintance on the planning committee, and he told me the township owns the property, and it's a done deal. That's what I've been told. So, I know that we're getting a lot of not-done-deal here, but from, from what I've heard from someone close to me, it's pretty much happening. I feel, I'm a, I do architectural woodwork for a living, so I feel that the estimate is grossly unest- un- underfunded for what they're saying. I think it was around eighty million or so, plus or minus, but I think especially with the way costs have been over the past, uh, year, or at least even six months, costs have really gone up, so I want you to at least consider that as well. It's going to be much higher than what's proposed. And really, just the traffic and the intersection there at Rose Tree Road and, um, three fifty-two is very dangerous, extremely. So, I would ask that at least you have a plan really thought about with PICO, or no, I'm sorry, not PICO, with, um, with PennDOT, I'm sorry, because it's a lot of work there, and I don't know how they're going to extend that bridge that goes down toward, uh, direction of Elwin. There's a lot of things to consider, and I just don't know that everybody has really considered all of the factors in there. So, I just want to present that. Thank you for letting me speak. I know everybody has their own interest, and for me, it's, I live very close to there, so that's why it's more, you know, to my heart, so, thank you.
All right, next, we have Mike Risser Edgemont.
Hi, I'm Mike Risser Edgemont. Thanks again for letting us speak and giving our ideas and input. We, we've been talking about new schools for a while now, and back in two thousand and eighteen, you had a consulting firm that recommended that we renovate and expand our four elementary schools. And we could fill the need for kindergarten classes by adding on to three of the four schools. It was much more cost-effective, they recommended it, and that consulting firm disappeared. We got a new consulting firm in, and they pushed for the Edgemont Elementary School. We rode the wave with the Edgemont Elementary School. Everybody stole it, it was a done deal. It's not a done deal. Not done until the permits are done, the construction is started, and then it's, pretty much, you can't stop it then. Why was it wrong in two thousand and eighteen to renovate and expand our elementary schools? And that's what the recommendation was, that we got rid of that consulting firm, and we got a new consulting firm that all of a sudden wanted to build a new school, and they wanted neighborhood schools, so they wanted to put one in Edgemont. So, we went through the whole thing with the pipelines and the traffic and the cost, and it didn't happen. So, now we're going to a K-one. Nei- that's a total contradiction of neighborhood schools. You're going to ship your youngest kids in the whole district, the longest bus rides, to one school. The youngest children, the kindergarten, first graders, they're not going to be going to school with their neighbors, their siblings. They're going to be separated, sent to this kindergarten, first-grade school where the tra- the, the traffic is going to be horrendous, because mom and dad are going to drive, or want to drive half of these kids. You know, but parents, they're not going to want their kids on those buses, you know, for those long rides, they're going to be driving them. If you drive by Glenwood, you drive by East Goshen Elementary, you drive by some of the elementary schools, the parents that drop their kids off now, and that's not the kindergarten kids as much as first through fifth grade. The kindergarten kids are even going to be more so, parents are going to want to drop them off. We really think that the idea that this is a done deal is not true. It's not a done deal, and people need to know that. This is not a done deal. We are not just putting the flag up and saying, yes, we're building a K-one center. Okay? What we're doing is, we're looking at this as an option, but I really think we would have had full-day kindergarten if we had did what they said in two thousand and eighteen, renovated our four schools, expanded three of them, we would have kindergarten right now, and it would have been a lot less money. So, can I please just say, we need to look at that. I've getting a lot of feedback from taxpayers, seniors, a lot of people, all about taxes, what it's going to cost. Our administrative costs have gone up one hundred percent in ten years for our Rose Tree Media School District administrative cost. So, that's a lot in ten years. That's just administrators, that's not teachers. Thank you very much.
All right, next, we have Michael Straw Media.
Good evening, uh, Michael Straw Media. I also want to thank you for, um, letting us come up and, uh, share our ideas. I too have concerns with, um, the construction of a K-through-one center. I've been up here before and brought my concerns, um, but I have some additional concerns that, I agree with Mr. Risser, um, when it comes to the busing situation. Currently, parents walk their kids to Media Elementary School. Now, we're going to be expecting K-through-one students to then suddenly be bussed all the way over here, um, on Rose Tree Road. I mean, in the end of the day, I like the neighborhood school option better. There's one other concern that I thought about when it comes to, um, this K-through-one center. The previous Edgemont school, um, when you took out the bond, the interest rate was so much lower. We're now going to have to deal with a higher interest rate, which is going to, you know, just add on to the costs for the construction of this school in the long run. But I did want to, um, add one point as well, um, that's not with the K-through-one center, um, and I, uh, want to support the, the, um, the school boards. I want to support the school board in terms of backing you in that we should have a cellphone policy in the other schools. As somebody who was, um, in school when cellphones first came out, they're a distraction, um, they take away time for learning, um, and in the end of the day, I mean, the only reason why I needed a cellphone really when I was in high school or even middle school was to text my mom and dad and let them know that I'm coming home, or I needed to, to stay late because I was at a club or some reason. There really shouldn't be a reason to, you know, use it in a middle school or even in elementary school for any other facet, because it's just going to essentially provide a distraction. So, I just want to say to you that I back you in backing your principles in instituting a, um, cellphone policy. It's a distraction, and they're there to learn, so thank you.
Thank you. Just a note, because it was mentioned twice, we do have a cellphone policy in all of our schools. It started last year, and it is very successful in high school, the middle school, and the elementary schools. All right, we will move to, uh, we have no superintendent comments.
Thank you for the opportunity, appreciate it. I wanted to talk about, not the K-one school per se, but the, the, um, the idea about bringing in a large, uh, artificial turf field component to, uh, that renovation project. This is just something that I don't hear talked about enough. I have four students in the district. My oldest graduated from Penncrest last year. My youngest is at Glenwood. My youngest is at Glenwood this year. I'm a chiropractor in Middletown for the past 20 years, specializing in pediatrics. I see a lot of students from our district, student athletes, very familiar with the injuries that can happen on the sports field. I emailed the board, Madam President, earlier today with some of this research that I put together, and I just wanted to run through that really quick, if that's okay. Okay. Artificial turf fields are often sold to athletic departments and school districts based on their cost-saving potential. A more accurate description would be to say the costs are simply transferred. This occurs in three primary ways. Number one, injury burden is increased for student athletes. This is in the form of a significant increase in lower extremity injuries. Number two is maintenance costs. They tend to be kicked down the road, giving the district the illusion of budgetary savings, only to get hit with massive replacement and disposal costs later on, which oftentimes aren't budgeted for or accounted for. Number three, health and environmental costs, specifically heat hazard and chemical exposure to crumb rubber fill, which leaves the school district vulnerable to liability concerns. I have a number of studies outlining the research behind the increase in injury. It's very borne out in the research. If you wanted to kind of look at those 2001, I'm sorry, 2021 study showed a 58% more likely rate of sustaining injuries on an artificial turf versus grass. The NFL looked at this as well in the 2021 to 2022 season, and they determined significantly higher rates of lower extremity injuries. And even more concerning, 60% of those required season-ending surgery. My second daughter tore her ACL last year and, you know, has missed, she's a high-performing soccer athlete, so this is very close to me, I've looked into it quite a bit. The turf is cheaper, myth is the second section of this document that you've all received. You can look at that, but over, this is pretty well borne out as well, in a 2025 Sustainability Journal study, it showed that over a 25-year horizon, natural grass had a lower total cost than artificial. And we do want to be conscious of the increased heat, heat stroke, that type of thing. Health and environmental costs. Significantly hotter temperatures.
I'm sorry, that's time.
Okay.
But we do have your email, thank you. And I do want to just note for the public in general, on December 1st, we are going to have a public discussion regarding synthetic turf at Springton Lake Middle School.
I will be there. The school did a major project.
Move on, but thank you. We have your email with that information. All right. We will move to old business. We'll start with the vote for policies for second read and approval. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We will move to human resources. We will start with letter A, retirement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, so I want to say this is for the retirement for Catherine Hall, who's a bus driver and has been with the Rose Tree Media School District since 2001, which means she's retiring after 24 years of dedicated service. I say it every time, and I mean it every time. 24 years is an incredible gift to our district, and if you've ridden a school bus lately, my hat is off to Ms. Hall, because that is a very stimulating environment. So I wish her the very best for her retirement as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, I suggest we group letters B to S together. Letters B to S, B as in Baltimore, S as Seattle. Is there any objection to this? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Can I make one comment, please? N, I'm sorry, N, which is a nominal thing about approving staff to serve as game workers for the football District 1 playoffs. I don't remember the last time our football team has made it to the District 1 playoffs or even had a winning. It's been a long time since we've had a winning season. And I know that some very concerned, not concerned, but involved parents came to this board to rebuild the program, and I was cautiously optimistic about it. And I just have to say, the football program is not just about the football team. Our football team is inclusive, and it brings in the Linking Learning to Life students into the program. There's a cheerleading squad that's not just the high school students, but they also bring in the younger students who want to participate. You have a marching band, which you just saw in the highlights going. We host the competition. The football program is much bigger than just the football team, and there's probably, I don't know, at least a third of the school who participates in it. So, to see us turn around the program from really struggling to this is a huge win for the entire school. So, thank you to everybody who supported the program, and congratulations to the team for this great ride and for everybody to follow along and tag along.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. We will move on to finance. I suggest we group letters A through M. A as in Alabama, M as in Michigan. Is there any objection to this? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
I would just like to take a second to thank Mr. Seeny and Mr. Nolan for their continued, sort of, oh my God, my brain. Thank you, service dedication, constantly moving forward, new capital projects here at the district. We've been seeing some great strides in the past couple of years under their leadership, and I just wanted to thank them.
I just wanted to thank the Rose Tree Colts for their generous donation, too, that we are voting on now. So, thank you, Colts. Premature, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next up, I suggest we group letters O through X together. O as in Olympia, X as in Xanadu. That wasn't mine. Is there any objection to this?
Xanadu is great.
Hearing none. Is there a motion?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All, okay.
I repeat what I said earlier.
Thank you, Rose Tree Colts. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. We will move to financials and bill lists. Letter A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. We will move to the addendum. We will start with letter A, approve the appointment of an administrative employee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Well, I will hope to be the very first to say that we are very, very excited to have Mr. Joshua Rehack come to us and be proposed as the new principal for Glenwood Elementary. He has an illustrious career. He brings a lot of leadership and education experience, and also as a former social studies teacher to another social studies teacher, tremendously excited to have him on board as well. And we are looking forward to him, I wouldn't say filling Mr. Bucci's shoes, but adding to Mr. Bucci's legacy at Glenwood Elementary. So, thank you very much for coming. We look forward to welcoming you to the Rose Tree Media family.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Dr. Napson Williams, if we can just take a second. Mr. Rehack is here this evening, so I'm going to ask him to come up to the podium, so he has a chance to meet the board and the community and introduce the folks that have accompanied him this evening. So, Josh, if you would come up to the podium.
I'm going to make a joke about my daughter. She just told me to lock in Dad, so.
You don't want to crash out, my friend, let me tell you.
Well, good evening, Dr. Malash, Madam President, members of the board, and Rose Tree Media community members. I am absolutely ecstatic and excited to be named as the principal at Glenwood Elementary School. I want to thank you all for entrusting me with your confidence to continue the strong Glenwood traditions that Mr. Bucci, Mr. Doherty have set over, you know, the many years. I'm in, I know we are all in the relationship business, and I am so excited to hit the ground running, building new relationships with our kids, with our teachers, and with our families. I look forward to creating some lifelong learners who are creating a pipeline for not only a continually growing Penncrest football team, but, you know, board members, future doctors, leaders, chiropractors, and things like that. So, thank you for entrusting me. You know, I look forward to the challenge ahead. I do want to take this opportunity, I know they don't want to be acknowledged, but my wife, Carla, who is a high school psychology teacher, and my daughter, Mia and Reese, who are high school and middle school students. So, I do want to thank them very much. You know, the life of all of our jobs, you know, there are sacrifices, and they have been troopers with the many hours that I have spent, you know, supporting kids over the years, and they'll continue to do the same. So, thank you so much for this opportunity, I look forward to it.
All right. I suggest we group letters C through F. Letter B was tabled, C through F. Is there any objection to this? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I would like to read the contents of item F, since we just introduced it at the beginning of this meeting. Here's the wording. Ratify the agreement with Garnet Valley School District to enroll one student in the Garnet Valley Virtual Program for the 2025-2026 school year to provide regular education direct instruction. Rose Tree Media School District will maintain local education agency or LEA status for this student's individualized education program.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. We will move to announcements. Executive sessions. There was an executive session held at 5:45 PM until 6:30 PM before the legislative meeting on Thursday, September 25th, 2025, to discuss privileged matters with the board's council and the performance of an employee. The executive session held from 6:00 PM until 6:30 PM before the work session meeting on Thursday, October 9th, 2025, was to discuss privileged matters with the board's coun- Future meetings. There will be a work session on Thursday, November 13th, 2025, at 6:30 PM at Springton Lake Middle School in the library. There will be a policy committee meeting on Monday, November 17th, 2025, at 4:00 PM in the Education Center Boardroom. And the next legislative meeting will be on Thursday, November 20th, 2025, at 6:30 PM at Penncrest High School in the auditorium. As we have now reached the end of our agenda, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.